I think Dave's still in the hallway.
Ready? Okay. So, it being Monday, the October 15th, we're out of executive session and back in open session.
I'm sending or something.
We're going to take things a little bit out of order. John, maybe you want to go first on the ban stand restoration? Did you want to talk about that?
I can if you want.
Quick synopsis?
The store commission met last week to review the information from the two lowest bidders. We reached out to Liz to get some additional information because we didn't have enough based on what they had submitted to be able to make decisions. So we asked them to provide some specific information with respect to jobs that they had done that are for certain operations as well as specific practices for that. And we've received information coming back from one of the bidders and that another bidder, the other bidder has come back and maybe withdrawing. So, store commission will meet next week. We'll consider that whatever information we have available at night and hopefully be able to make recommendations to the board selectmen to move forward with getting the executive and get that project.
Great. Great, thank you. Okay, next we have Highway Superintendent, pavement management, speed limits, and transfer station stickers. Scott, you're on.
Back to talk more about the speed limit, sign changes. I did some research, I'd sent it to you folks. I contacted Old Colony Planning about doing a speed study. They did a speed study, actually ironically, nothing to do with this, in July and August of Main Street. And I have all the paperwork if people want to look at it. Speeds, number of cars, speed limits, average speed limits. They didn't do the middle section, they did the ends. So I contacted OCPC and they're going to try to put it on the schedule to do a speed study in that 45 mile an hour zone to see if they can feel that, that's fine. Other than that, I did find something from, I did send it to you from 1972. They sent that over from Old Colony Planning Council, how the speed limits were set by the selectmen of that time and they're the exact same speed limits that are there now was set 1972. So, they've been, they were changed, they were set in 1972 for the speed and over the time they were changed for whatever reasons. So, I found that very interesting that that's what, 1972 they felt it was fine. So, other than that, yeah, that's, I mean, I've sent you all the information that I had. So, on that, the transfer station, I'm going to hand it off to Art because he's there, he knows more than me about the transfer stations right now. Just changing some guidelines and rules of the transfer station.
Well, should we stay with the roads?
Oh, you want to stay with the roads, sorry. Yeah, you can, I mean, there's nothing to, there's nothing, yeah, sure, I'm sorry. I'm dead.
No worries, no worries. Howard, did you want to talk about the roads?
Yeah, I think first, what troubles me is that things happen now in this community with no seeming connection. I know, having experienced what your experience up there for seven or eight years, Mass Highway does what Mass Highway does. And I was, we got an inkling of what was going to happen on my street and past this road just before Jim retired or on his extension, whatever it was, when they stopped paving down on Main Street by Ring Road or Crescent Street because of the stone wall and people got up in arms about that or they would have changed it or done something and we would have lived with that. Today, I drive down Pashna Ginet, driving in the guardrails on a portion of the street. No one, none of us knew anything about it. I've never known anybody to have an accident there. I think the plan is clearly to create a corridor through my neighborhood and through this town to facilitate traffic. If you travel on Route 44, day or night, weekends or not, you'll find it bumper to bumper at certain, most times of the day. And that traffic, most of it's passing through Plimpton. And most, much of it is coming past my door, those who choose to get off at 1:05. To have the, where's the planning, where's the public input to any of this? There is none. I saw the guy and his, he happened to be driving a Volvo station wagon with New Hampshire plates and I'm sure that survey to do what was done at my car was probably done by that person two years ago. We all know how long it took Mass Highway to create a double barrel 44, but of course it's a half a loaf. The same is true with Center Street. Years ago, when I was on the planning board here, I went in town to see what was going on and there was a road envisioned around South Halifax, back out around Halifax Center and back out through and come out on Main Street. Well, that's what Center Street has become. They paved Copper Street, they paved Maple Street, they paved Center Street, they wanted to pave Main Street from Senator to Route 106 and they're going to funnel because it made such a mess of the Halifax development along there, that it's a mess. So people are choosing, if they're passing through Halifax, they're coming now that road. And it's being dumped onto Plimpton. And I fear that they're dumping the Millboro traffic onto Plimpton, on Prospect and Prospect. I have no idea, and I don't think most people remember from their tests that they took at age 16, that the fundamental speed limit is 40 miles an hour, I guess, if not posted. The traffic slowed down a bit when the pavement went in and new signs went in, but it's right back as bad as it was. I would remind you that that, I've seen that light upended there five times since when we moved here in '73. I used to have two rows of trees along the right side of my property by the big tree. The first row was taken by, down by two errant Volkswagens that went through at high speed. If you look at the tree itself, it has a recent scar. I've collected two or three motorcyclists on my program. I think the crowning act was last week, we had a FedEx delivery and they never ever pulled into my yard, they always parked on the road and came in. He said, "Oh, you think I'm crazy? I'm not going to sit out here anymore." I have about 120 foot visibility around the corner. I don't know whether they're supposed to be doing 40 miles an hour, they, it's posted, what, 20?
About 20, 25 probably at the corner. I'm not sure exactly what they posted.
This way is one, and the other way I think is maybe 25. They don't slow down. Where's the police? Where's the cops? Why isn't that coordinated within, we're changing things, we're changing the traffic pattern now, they're driving across my lawn up there now because of the way it's been set up and they drive across the neighbor's corner. Where's that coordination? Where's the enforcement? What's it supposed to be? I can't tell. You come down the street, George Collins put those, one of those signs up, the 25 mile an hour. That's gone, I guess they ripped that out, they have a new one, they have nice bright arrows and the rest. But once you go around that corner, is it now 40 miles an hour? And how about the people coming in from, on, when a tuxed road off of 58, who are cutting through? What are they, there's nothing. I think there's a child sign down there and that's it. No, no speed limit sign, no nothing. Perhaps they say, well, they've got to come to a stop so we don't need anything. But I have no idea. But at 120 feet, I have barely three seconds to decide whether I'm going to pull out of my driveway, God forbid I back out of my driveway. My neighbors across the street, elderly people, handicapped people, they have about half the sight distance that I have. And if they back out, they, we get it from both barrels. And of course, then immediately they come around and then they hit the accelerator, either coming up when a tuxed and turning right or coming up the hill or whatever. So, I think the thing that bothers me is, you would think if we're changing patterns that we'd somehow, the police would be there, there'd be some engagement between the Highway Department and Mass Highway and pleased to see that if they, if they truly want to change the patterns there, that it's enforced. And I'm not hopeful. I don't come here ever hoping that anything will ever change. I've been there.
Well, we can certainly ask Chief to do some presence.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's found out that, you know, you need to be densely populated or business zone to be able to implement the municipal modernization of business, right? There is one other provision there where you can try to have it declared, but dangerous or whatever, and I think that should happen if I caught it quite frankly, because it is dangerous to me and my neighbors and others. And it isn't Plimpton people.
Right.
Yeah, it's people simply passing through.
Right, that are taking shortcuts.
And you recall when you and I were first selectmen, Plimpton was notorious for enforcement and then something happened.
Yeah, I think articles in the Globe and Halifax Reporter, yes.
The department was fractured and now I occasionally see a note where they were up on my road, but I don't see them. I see them in the craziest places.
So, there's been some discussion about seeing on, other than state roads, if we couldn't make the speed limit, the default speed limit in town everywhere at 30 miles an hour. If we did that and we combined it with more police enforcement again, would that solve the issues you're putting before us or would certainly improve them?
Yeah, it gives me another second or two to get out of my driveway and my neighbor potentially to get out of their driveway and anybody else on the street. In that sense, yes. I think the chief benefactor of this has been the Middleborough Dump, because that operates six days a week. And some of the biggest dump trucks I've ever seen in my life can buy my house now. And they start at 7 o'clock in the morning, many, some earlier and choose to wait to get in there. But that's, those are the benefactors. And people passing through.
John?
Just a couple thoughts. One, just on the speed limit piece, that I may not do something that you thought thoroughly thrown and certainly doubt the state has, or maybe didn't have and this is exactly what we're doing. But, you know, when the speed limit is changed and when that information gets out there into the world of the internet, now that changes on all of the, you know, online driving and the Google Maps or Waze, whatever. And when the speed limit jumps, especially on like that stretch of Main Street, and I've heard some anecdotal comments already that the traffic has picked up since we changed the, changed the signs. And some of them are really good at this and getting that data and, you know, I don't know if it goes into a state database or whatever, but whatever it is, speed limit changes now is quicker to go this way versus that way. And so that's one of those things that's just worth, I think, thinking about. I think the other piece, and I know we've already, you know, we already agreed to this, these funds in order to make some needed improvements and in my opinions and things that are totally crazy. That said, I think this is probably a good lesson for us, especially with the 22 reflectors in the north part of Main Street now between Center and Maple Street, that we need to do some really good reading of whatever it is that they give us. And you were, this was done well before you were here, but because, you know, while it's good to be able to get these striping down through the roads, a lot of the other improvements really don't preserve the rural character of the town. You know, 50, 60, 80 foot long guardrails, especially since they're standout now because they have to be silver because of the end caps or whatever it is, and John, you and I talked about that because we were able to get them around here where they kind of fade away. Even so, throwing up in some of the small back road, the guardrail that sort of is totally out of keeping, has that impact. And then when we have reflectors, every time this corner, you know, that, it impacts. And we're kind of, we're kind of in this one already, but in the future, if the state is offering us money, I think we really need to do some due diligence on what we're asking, what we're getting for it and what control we're giving away.
So, you do the highways here, are we going to see more guardrails now on Prospect? I mean, there must have, must have been a six inch drop to put them on across from Peter McQuire himself.
Well, Scott, you can talk about where they're putting them.
The, where the guardrails are going or where they're going out of the plan, from what I understand, they're replacing cement barriers. They're not just putting guardrails up where they feel they were, cement barriers are there. They're replacing the antiquated cement barriers, for the most part, they're cement barriers.
I think the one they put up today is that, but Howard, there's a number of spots where there's tubing, that fabric tubing.
Yeah.
And I think any place you see that.
Yeah, that's, and the Center Street's getting some.
Mayflower, I think, has some.
Main Street, there's some more going down Main Street.
Is it, is it based on some public safety history or the fact that they intend to dump more traffic on these roads?
And now when they did, when we did 58, I think the number of guardrails increased by 300%. And that was because of state guidelines about drop off from the side of the road to someone and so forth. We were just really lucky and when they did that, that we had asked in Center of Town to do the ground guardrails. And they were like, well, I just can ask for it for everybody. And it didn't matter, cost wasn't that different, the states are fine. And then when they put them up, I remember having a conversation with them, he said, "Oh my God, thank God they did that because, you know, well, most of the way up to your part of town is guardrail." Because of the field going along there, the drop off. So I think, Howard, that there's a, there's a set standard.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
But whether that, whether that necessarily makes sense, and I had the same opinion as you did, was I've been here 20 years and I can't think of the last time someone went off at that point or at that point. And we could all do that, but we agreed to the funds, so this is the plan.
Well, that's what they make of us, you know? Now we're going to spend our whole fall and spring worried about accommodating the marijuana law. And two years ago, we accommodated there, tearing down trees to put up solar arrays. I was thinking, excuse me, but, you know, what's next? Houses of ill repute and I'm beginning to think we already have them and they're called Town and City Alls because we just allow this crap to flow down. Mass Highway is the most arrogant group of people I ever worked with in my life. They're a fiefdom. And they could give a damn about Plimpton's rural character. That's for us to do. So to give a damn.
How do we move forward if we want to explore this 30 mile an hour default? Do we, do we know how to move forward?
I talked to John over in Halifax and briefly talked to him about it, I could pursue it more with him. It's a matter of petitioning the state and having the right qualifications, you know, anything can be done.
We want to do it.
Let's do it.
Yeah, we want to do it. So, you know, maybe tilting at windmills, but let's go off and see if we can get that done. And I think he has a wealth of information. I know it has to go to town meeting because they actually had an article, got turned down, but let's, you know, not invent the wheel, let's see if we can take a lot of the work they did and go after it. Okay? So that's, we just put that on your plate.
Thank you.
So you'll get back to us when you have more?
Yeah, well, it's Charlie's, his name?
Charlie Seaver.
I'll get ahold of Charlie and again, and see if I can meet with him, get his paperwork and see.
Liz can help you, I mean, she sees them all the time, so.
And anything we can do to help, please don't hesitate.
It should be, he's probably, he's done all the research with his template to follow. I mean, just imagine just crossing the teeth and bugging the eyes and sending it in.
Hopefully.
Great.
Hopefully.
Yeah, let's get the ball rolling. Perfect.
Okay.
All right, so now you want to move on?
Yes, I'm going to move on. I'm just going to hand it over to, because of the, he's been dumped longer than I have and just explain the change.
Transfer stations.
Transfer stations, all, transfer.
We don't want the state to make us.
Okay, I believe each of you have a copy of, few things we'd like reinforced, basically. We've always had the provision, and this is where I guess we want to reinforce, that business and commercial operations can't buy a sticker. We don't have a business or commercial rate. We have a residential rate and a rate for seniors. Residential rate is $200, seniors 65 or older is $100. Those are the two rates, that's it. We don't, we're not interested in providing Cisco to use our facility. We find neighbors, but they generate far too much. So it's just that we'd like to keep the, keep it to residential only. That's been the rule for that. And the other one, residents having a separate dwelling unit, and maybe we could use that term, that we're aware of, would need a sticker for each dwelling unit. Okay, let that, there's several apartment houses in town, they each need, if they would have got, if they were to use the transfer station, each dwelling unit, even though it might be in the same building, would need a sticker. Very, very simple.
Do we know that they don't get a sticker now?
In some cases, yeah.
Okay, so we need to fix it.
So, just, just, it's just a reinforcement by the board.
Okay.
Of a longstanding rule. Yeah, and that's, that's the multifamily, and there are a few in town.
And I think we're saying dwelling is where there's a kitchen and.
Whatever is defined by building code or.
Right.
Yeah, each dwelling unit shall have their own sticker.
Okay, and they would be.
Have to be an apartment or in-law or anything.
I think the only designation I'm making is that if my daughter, say, came home, lived on the top floor of the house, but there was no kitchen or anything.
Yeah, no.
It's something that was designated as a residence. I know I'm from Pembroke, if you have an in-law apartment, separate address, it's, you need separate trash.
Sure, sure, makes sense.
So, I think from experience in Athens on.
No, Scott, would the residential rates still apply? So, anybody who is under 65 would pay 200 per their dwelling unit? If you're over 65, it's.
This is just trying to tighten up some loose ends and also trying to keep the cost down. Trash is going up, tonnage is going up, recycling costs are going up. Because, the cost of recycling is, it used to be where you could make some money recycling, you're not, it's costing money. So, in fact, again, I'm from Pembroke, they have a spring meeting and a town meeting and a fall town meeting, and this town meeting in the fall, they're going for monies because the trash bill, it's costing more than what we've already paid for trash, which means we're going to have to pay and then our trash bill is going to go up again because they can't meet the demands of the trash law. And that's just because something, we're hoping to maybe tie some of these loose ends that might help for a while, you know, trying to fix these loopholes.
Okay, it's a great idea. I mean, we certainly want to try to at least break even on the transfer station.
Again, this, this is required, but we'd like to get the board to say, yeah, you need to do it. The stickers must be permanently affixed to the rear window. We find them taped on and somehow they wind up getting on a vehicle from Halifax or, you know, things like that. It shouldn't be. Try to get in a duck spray with it not being even in the right spot. I get it. Just, they peel off nice and easy and you put it on and that's it. So, you can't, you can't swat stickers.
We agree.
We agree. That sounds reasonable.
I think.
Pretty much self-explanatory.
Yeah, I mean, we already turn things away if it's, if it's unacceptable. Like, we don't do construction debris. We don't do brush, things like that. We get the questions, but we're in Plimpton, at a burn pile.
Exactly.
Do we advise people on where they can take it?
Yeah, we suggest there's a place in Plymouth that they can, they can even take stumps down there, balbonis, so that they can get rid of it. Well, they could, if they've got a lot of construction debris, they can hire a 10-yard or a 15-yard and get rid of it that way, but. There are state inspectors where this material is dumped and if you're caught, you're caught. And Scott will get a letter.
Are we narrowly licensed for household loan? Or is that our current position?
What was the question?
Oh, sorry.
Is our, is our DEP, however we operate, limit us to household loan?
Well, part of it is across, Howard. Though you'd get another.
No, 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 but I just, I just curious, out of curiosity.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're permitted for household refuse. Not for any commercial or anything like that. And they do inspect that, they, there were two state inspectors from DEP down there and one day they walked every square foot of that facility up into the woods, up into the bushes and down to the fences and.
You don't want to go too deep.
Everything, so.
I think we're all for this.
I, yeah.
You know, I mean, you guys do a great job down there, it looks great, yeah, we support it. Do you need anything beyond our support or?
No, if you just reaffirm what basically we've been doing, just so that we can say, "No, hey, board is like them."
And the timing of this is just because we'll be starting to sell new stickers in January, so just want to get this kind of straightened out.
Okay.
So we're comfortable reaffirming.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for the hazardous waste, Dave.
We'll be doing that again, as long as we get the money at town meeting.
Okay, okay.
So you voting to approve the three?
Well, I don't know if we need to vote to approve it, we just, we're going to support it.
We reaffirm our support. There'll be one change, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, we can tweak it a little.
Well, do you want to give the report about the speed limit plan? Because Dave and Vicki are back.
Dave and Vicki asked specifically that they be updated on the speed limit, so if you could just read.
We are, I'm in the process of getting a speed study done on your area. I talked with Old Colony Planning Council, we got to do it. They did a speed study, a traffic study, just by coincidentally, in the beginning of, end of July, beginning of August, which had nothing to do with anything. But they did like the ends of the streets, they didn't do the middle, so they're going to try to fit something where they can do that long stretch to see how the speed limit goes. And then we talked about pursuing the blanketed speed limit policy. We're going to, I'm going to talk to the town administrator from Halifax, who's did this already, and I'm going to try to follow what he did and we'll try to get that going through the state to.
What is that?
Well, it just sets a blanket speed.
30, we're going to shoot for 30, unless it's posted.
I bet they did it under municipal modernization. I would bet they did it under the municipal modernization.
Could be. Under public safety.
We evaluate the study, put a request that they attempt to pull out of our driveway.
Sure, yeah.
Because that does clarify the issue quite a bit.
Yep. Nope, the, the only problem that you could have with doing a speed study is they use the 85th percentile as a gauge, so which means they could be, you could be a chance, I don't think, could happen with the chance they could be going faster.
Fast.
And then they say, "Well, now if they go faster, then we should make it 50." I don't know what would happen, I doubt that could happen, but that is a possibility. The average speed limit on Main Street is 35 to 40, according to all.
They let the drivers decide.
Can we find out what day they're doing the survey?
I'm sure they'll tell me.
Yeah.
So Vicki and Dave, we had a lot of. So Vicki and Dave, we had a lot of discussion about this. Howard had many concerns about where he lives and the selectmen were unanimous in their enthusiasm for exploring the default 30 mile an hour speed limit everywhere in town other than state roads. And Scott's going to pursue that and we'll move forward with that.
Excellent. But in the meantime, we're still going to do the traffic study of Main Street and do what we need to do.
The cutoff is what, 150 feet. Our zoning is 250.
And spot doesn't really help us. It needs to be. It'd be too hard for people driving the roads. It needs to be consistent, so it seems like it's reasonable.
Are we just asking for Main Street or are we going to do Howard's?
Well, the speed limit, we'll try for the whole town, but we're going to do a study on Main Street.
The study will be done...
Yeah, on Main Street.
Just a portion of Main Street.
A portion of Main Street that wasn't done with this last study.
The entire town, the neighborhood, the state roads, could be evaluated, could be defined, we'll get that. So we'll just be honest, post?
I would imagine that probably would. I don't think the state would say...
Yeah, I don't think the state would, yeah, exactly.
But we can address, I mean, this is not going to be a quick process, as you're going to deal with the state, so give us some time to figure it out.
In the meantime, we've got a lot of traffic and we get seasons going by and with the traffic.
Have to be very, very careful.
Well, we talked about increasing police presence as well.
Yes.
Well, but I mean, if the speed limit is posted at 45, police presence and somebody zips up there at 45, then...
I know, you're right. You're right.
If you put the limit to 45, it doesn't think people are going to fall down. But if you have a posted limit at 45 and you feel the need to do 52, take it in appropriately. But if you want to be where it probably should be and then do it, it's a problem.
Well, I mean, certainly, you know, you go on Main Street now, it's more like driving in Vermont than it is what it's been here. I mean, you know, you go to Vermont, the speeds are quite a bit higher and of course, you're even a little less dense than we are in Main Street, but there's parts of Main Street that are turned open. It's the issue of some of the driveways and it's a big change from what it was. I mean, I actually had one stretch there that was different depending which way you went.
Yeah.
It was 35 one way and 30 the other in the same stretch of road. It was always very... Shame that's gone. And just for, just an interesting side note, that in the speech that they did, there were, there was one person that went between 71 and 75 miles an hour.
Oh, my.
And there were two people that went, well, this chart is for 96 miles an hour to 999 miles an hour. And there was two people that went over that during the morning, actually.
Oh, so you both...
Yep. So two people went almost 100 miles an hour down that road.
Yeah, I had a Corvette through my weekends or it's like the chicane, like Le Mans.
Yep. They went between 96 and 999 miles.
She was late to school, but she had...
All right. Let's move on. Yeah, thank you, guys.
So more to come, we're working on it.
More to come.
When do you want to invite him?
Well, we've got some work to do.
We've got some work.
Yeah.
We'll follow.
Yeah, great. Thanks for coming in, Howard, and thank you for that email. Thank you, Scott, very much.
I did, thank you.
And your voting stuff there, if you need any of it.
Good night.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, we'll flip back to out of the agenda. I think we're going to execute the employment contract for the fire chief. So I'm on the motion we sign the contract?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And just like that?
What's that?
And just like that?
Just like that? Well, we just need another signature from the The other employment agreement is with Police Sergeant Terry. And we discussed that briefly in executive and I think we're in agreement.
I'll make a motion that we sign the employment agreement with Sergeant Stephen M. Terry.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
See, we've talked about the Town Grants Bandstand before. The bid process for the mini pumper, Liz?
So we have sold the mini pumper for $60,000.
Woo-hoo!
And there should be a check arriving here tomorrow, I believe via UPS. And then they should be coming to pick it up. They're coming from Alabama to get it, so probably in the next couple days.
It's going to be a long drive back.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Jeez.
So they're coming to get it and the fire department is getting the vehicle prepared to be picked up.
Terrific.
Great, that's great.
That's great news, yeah.
All's well that ends well, but we won't count our chickens before they hatch.
Till you get that check.
Until we have the check and the fire truck is off the town property.
And it clears.
The fire station exhaust removal system.
So this one's been a little complicated. There was quite a bit of back and forth between some interested parties and the town and also the construction bid unit with the state trying to work, help us work through the specifications for it and everything. We did get responses back and we only got two. They were very different from one another and I think we would probably be well-suited to put it out for responses another time. And I'm going to see, I put a call into the state to see if somebody can help us maybe rework the specifications a little bit, maybe do a performance-based spec or something that will yield us a better result that's a little less money. So more on that to come, but I don't, I can't see any reason to move forward with awarding it right now. And we don't even have the money specifically for it. Obviously, it would be paid for out of our building maintenance account, but we don't have a specific line item for it yet or anything, so...
And the $60,000 that we're getting from the pumper will go into a separate account?
Correct, correct. And then we would have to get that moved over at town meeting.
Okay, so we need a little time anyways.
We do, we do. But, you know, it wasn't the worst exercise in the world to put it out there and kind of see what we got, so...
Good, good. We need to accomplish it this year, that's for sure.
We do.
Would you be doing that again soon or no?
I don't know.
Okay.
I got to see what the state says.
The Moon and Back Cafe Common Vicula's license, are we all set?
Yes, she still has to send the Board of Health paperwork. Hasn't completed that yet either.
Okay, yeah, she said she'll do it?
She said it was hand-delivered to her.
Right. Do we know, is she committed to do it? I mean...
Should we sign it before the Board of Health gets there?
The Board of Health issued a permit.
Well, they did.
Oh, they did.
Yes, but she's still waiting for the documents because they were trying to get them. The fire department did do their part.
Yeah.
So the things, everything's there.
Okay, oh, okay.
And I did get some insurance today.
Okay, okay, good. So we just have to sign this?
Yeah.
Do we need a border in?
Yeah.
So I would make a, I would say that we approve a common vicula's license for Lisa M. Davis doing business as the Moon's Back Cafe. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a planning board appointment request, Liz?
We do, I have it in correspondence, but we can do that now because it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
It's for Irving Butler.
So this is to take the place of John Rintucci? I would make a motion that we approve Irving Butler to the planning board member until May 18, 2019? Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I might just say we really appreciate your efforts.
Yes, thank you, Er.
That's been a constant challenge. Yeah, and he's been on there for a long time, so he brings that knowledge with him.
Yeah, they've got a good board.
Sure. Actually, I'll send this one down to Bree.
Down to Bree.
Thank you.
Board goals.
Thank you.
Economic development, I'm not aware of anything right now.
No, unfortunately.
Financial management? We did, did the letter go out to all the boards about the budget process?
Yeah.
Did you get, I didn't get a copy. Did you send it to me? If I did, I somehow destroyed it or something because I don't know where it is.
Yes.
Okay. My distribution list.
Yeah, I know, we've had some issues with the electronic distribution.
Public safety? They met, the committee met last week, everything's moving along, a couple little hiccups, but nothing special and it's moving forward. Looks good now that they're getting the windows in.
It does look really nice.
Get water tight, it's good. Good. Grants? I don't, not aware of anything right now. No, the only thing that came up is the master planner from Old Colony, who is here tonight, mentioned that in her report, she'd be giving us all kinds of information on possible grants for the various projects that came up, which is pretty exciting.
Yeah, that is.
That's great. Volunteerism, again, I think that's in abeyance right now. We got other things, technology, anything there, Liz, in terms of Michael or...
I'm waiting to hear back from him on the master plan. I was there when he compiled all the data and he had gone over everything with me, but I'm trying to get him to physically put it on paper so that I can send it around. I have yet to receive that. But he has been helping out with a few other matters, like downstairs with the building department. He's also getting them taken care of in the treasurer's office with the new printer. There was, they were having some issues over there, so he's been helpful.
Town administrator updates.
So we've covered a lot of my stuff as far as the different things out for bid and those sorts of projects. We started working on the Green Communities' annual reporting requirement. Hopefully, that's easier to do this year than it was last year because we're not making up for multiple fiscal years. And we did receive some of that, I believe it was called Meta Grant Funding for Old Colony Planning Council. So actually, Lisa, who was here earlier, she's going to be helping me with the annual reporting and those funds are coming to us from the state to cover her participation with that. So I sent an email out earlier to the different town departments as far as what information we need to compile. And the annual report is due December 3, I believe, so we're working on that now.
Okay.
Do you want me to go into correspondence?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So we have two letters for Edward and Allison McSweeney and for Alexander Falconer thanking them for the work that they did at the old townhouse. And the letters are the same as the drafts I sent out, plus some edits from John. So we thought that everybody would want to sign in person before sending them out.
Thank you for putting those together. Yeah, Allison, longtime teacher at the Dunnet and still making a difference in Plymouth.
Would you like me to copy them?
Yes, please.
Yeah, if you can make copies and then mail those out.
Send a copy to Jessica.
And then we have some paperwork here from Eversource. They're trying to get all of the paperwork and everything done properly for the pole that's out here, essentially in the parking lot area, for the new police station. And they've been waiting on us for a few things, but it took them a while to get it in the mail to us. So there's a couple items that we need the board to sign. And this has all been looked at by our OPM, by P3. So there's two spots here, I don't want to mess these up. There's two spots here for the board to sign. Is it yours?
Yeah. I'll update this and we'll send it around.
And then we have correspondence here from the Council on Aging. The first item is a notice that Nancy Butler was voted as a new member of the Council on Aging. And she's also going to be the COA representative on the Community Preservation Committee, so that's good.
Great.
And then additionally, they have notified us that they would like to, oh, yeah, that, to mail it out. This goes on the top, Bree, and then here's the envelope. Then they also let us know that on Monday, November 12, which is the day that Veterans' Day is observed, that they would like to utilize this large conference room for a continental breakfast prior to the Veterans' Day ceremony. It is a holiday, the townhouse will be closed, so Joy Marble is assuming responsibility for setup at 9:00 a.m. She will be opening up the doors to the participants for 10:00 a.m. and then locking up at 11:00 a.m. to attend the ceremony at the Town Green. And then she will be coming back here later in the day to clean up. So she's going to be responsible for getting in and out of the building and cleaning up after their festivities.
She did do one of the use of town property that the board...
Okay, I didn't, that's not in here.
It was done from before.
Oh, perfect, okay.
She was kind of, I should have written that to you.
That's okay.
So do we need to tell Tom Clark about the CPC?
Yes, and make sure that if she needs to fill out different things and everything, so we can follow up with that.
If we can do that this week, CPC meets next Tuesday night.
Oh, good, okay.
We're going to have Nancy Jones.
You have an invitation here from the South Shore Community Action Council. You're all invited to the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Run on Saturday, November 3, at 9:00 a.m. And it's a road race in Plymouth. So the invitation is here at the office if anybody wants to attend.
I'm having trouble envisioning the runners and the pumpkins running.
You have to run with the pumpkin.
Right. We'll let that go by.
We thought that we should acknowledge Cary Otto here in Plymouth. They did some work to, one of the fire engines, a piece of apparatus for the Plymouth Fire Department, and they comped the balance.
Wow, that was so nice.
So I don't know if maybe we should put together a formal thank you, but this just came in as a donation to the Plymouth Fire Department.
That was very nice of them.
We have a letter here from Miranda Boils informing the board of her resignation from the Plymouth Public Library Board of Trustees effective October 20, 2018. She's getting married and as of the 20th will no longer be a resident of the town of Plymouth.
Well, good for her.
So that. And then we have the Plymouth Halifax Express. There's some talk in here about the public safety building and how that's all coming together. Also acknowledgement of our firefighter, paramedic, Ian Andrews, who is one of our full-timers, and some of the coursework that he's been taking and doing things for further professional development, so... That wraps it for me.
Any other business we want to discuss before we go on to rants and raves? I'm good.
Oh, how about the meeting schedule?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
No, just maybe as another item to discuss is maybe formally setting this or deciding to put it on the next agenda to adopt... to put it on the next agenda to adopt every other week as a meeting schedule? It's, for me personally, it's working out really well. It's, it's difficult to, you know, work full-time and be ready for these meetings on a weekly basis, and the week in between just seems to give you more time to do all the reading that we need to do and be prepared for, for these meetings. And I don't know if that's something that the board would consider adopting, or at least discussing, maybe putting on the next agenda to discuss, maybe formalizing.
And I, I'm really comfortable with that, with the understanding, of course, that stuff came up.
Oh, absolutely.
And this is certainly not a board that shied away from work in general. I think it certainly helps our support staff as well, so I don't know if we want to.
We put it on the agenda? You want to put it on the agenda and talk about it for next time?
Yeah, I support the idea, so let's think about it and we'll.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda, perfect. Yeah, it does make it easier with the knowledge that if something came up, that we would definitely post a meeting.
A lot of times, it turns out that way anyway with Monday holidays. Like, say in November, if we meet the 5th, then the 12th we're off for the Veterans' Day observance, and then meet that following week. It kind of works that way.
Can I ask you, while you just mentioned that, what is the Veterans' Day ceremony? I didn't realize that they're actually one.
I believe it's something that, that they're working on, that our veterans agent is doing, Roxanne, and I believe she's working with the Council on Aging for it. I did receive a call from somebody in town, though, who was inquiring about the flags, and she felt like some of the flags should be replaced prior to the Veterans' Day ceremony. She was talking, referring to flags that were put up, I think, in preparation for the Memorial Day celebration, and she felt like some of them are starting to look kind of tattered and everything. So she was interested in that, and I told her that she'd probably be best suited to speak with Roxanne directly, so that nobody's taking down a flag without having something to replace it with.
Have, has anybody contacted you as far as the veterans in town?
Every once in a while, I'll get a small, it may suddenly be added, I'll get an email.
Joy or Roxanne?
No.
I think you should talk to at least Joy Marble, Roxanne. I mean, you handle the Memorial Day with all the veterans. I don't know who keeps those names. Do you keep them?
Yes. Kathy Ferguson updates that I send them to her. Once she doesn't, then she'll let me know, and then we.
So we should make sure that those people are contacted, so if they want to be part of the ceremony, they can be there.
Okay.
I do have flags.
Oh, okay.
I have flags, and I can reach out to maybe the Boy Scouts. They love to do projects, I think, and they can earn a badge and things for that.
Tomorrow, we can talk, because I have her name and everything, the person who called, so.
And I do know the flag up front, a flag was donated to the resident who passed away on 106. There was a flag donated to the Plimpton Fire Department, and John wanted to put out something together. The weather has just been not the best in cooperating, but I know that he was working on something too, and maybe it could be done before.
Can you, Bree, kind of act as our interface? Because I know at times this, they've done things, and we haven't, at least I haven't been aware.
No, I don't think any of us were aware that they were even contemplating doing anything.
At least be aware so we can show up if, if our schedules allow for it.
Okay.
And, you know, so if you could just tell, you hear more of what's going on and.
I can send out also the veterans' request to use town property to refresh everybody's mind on that, because I do send them, when it gets closer to the date, to the fire, police, and highway, so they know, they believe they want to do something on the Town Green for that day with a flag.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
I will send that.
Thank you.
Forgive me, just going back to dates to remember, I, so our next meeting is the 29th, two weeks from now.
Yes.
And then we were looking in November at the 5th and the 19th.
At the 5th and the 19th, right, okay.
Now, the 5th would not be, that would be right, the next Monday.
It would, but then we're off the 12th for Veterans' Day, and I didn't think you'd want to go two weeks.
Oh, that would actually be, what, three weeks then?
Yes, like, I didn't think you'd want to miss.
Would you do that, Ari?
Back-to-back.
Yeah, okay.
So you could just say that it's kind of like two meetings a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly strive for every other week, but things happen, and.
Right.
Right.
So right now, we're at the 29th, the 12th, and.
No, the 5th.
The 5th and the 19th.
The 5th and the 19th, yes.
And I also, I sent something to Bob Nunes from the town of Millboro, just to find out when might be a good date for all of us to go to one of their meetings. So he sent, he forwarded my email to the chair of his board, and they're going to get back to us with some dates.
Very nice.
Excellent.
It also works so great for December, the way that the.
The way it falls, perfect.
That if we did the back-to-back from the 29th to the 5th of November, and we did the 19th, December 3rd, and December 17th.
Yeah, because then the next two, it's Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve are on back-to-back Mondays.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
On the October 29th, Area 58 is going to come to talk about the sound system and have some recommendations on that.
So did he end up getting the quotes that you gave me?
And on 10/29, we will not be in this meeting room. We will be in the small meeting room.
Okay.
It is the election.
Okay.
This room will be set up for early.
For early voting, okay. So you just have to be sure to post us to the small meeting room, we'll be good to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Requested from Area 58. I spoke there.
Okay.
I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Anything else before rants and raves?
Do we have minutes?
Next week.
Next week?
Next time.
Next time. So we'll have the 10:1 minutes on 10/29 and 10:15, okay, so two weeks worth. Okay.
Great. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first. My rave is the, our meeting tonight with Old Colony Planning Council, coming in to help us develop a master plan, and we really had some good turnout, people coming in to express their desires about, just visually, different options, and how it was so nice to network with people who are in other committees that I don't necessarily see all the time to find out about different things that, that we should be involved with, like coming up with the, Anne Soboluski suggested reaching out to Alan Wheelock because they're talking about uses, and how our affordable housing plan, we should probably implement something along the lines with that in uses. So it's just nice to all get together and kind of spitball and throw out ideas about, and so that everybody's informed and move it in the right direction, so that's fine.
Mike?
Forgive me for sort of just echoing that, but one of the big three reasons I ran for selectmen again was in terms of this master planning and what we're able to leave here, and it's a pretty exciting opportunity.
Yeah, it really is. My rave is, I think, for the way the Plimpton Historical Society has been re-energized. This sad to have people aren't aware, there is a grave tour coming up at 4 o'clock. They did that a couple of years ago, which I attended, and it was really informational, but it was also a lot of fun. It's going to be followed by a potluck supper, which is nice to see those going again.
Oh, yeah.
And then at the end, they're going to vote the new bylaws, so if people are interested. And you know, it only costs $15 a year to join, and it's really a lot of fun, especially when they do the suppers. And they've, they've got a whole bunch of things they're thinking about for events, so it's great to see it going.
What time is the tour?
The tour is at 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, and that, you would meet where for that?
I'm not sure if they're meeting at the society or at the graveyard, but I assume they'll probably be at Hillcrest. One way or the other, they'll be at Hillcrest.
And then the supper is back at the Historical Society?
Yes, around 5:00 to 5:30.
Oh, good New England, early supper at 5:00. Yes.
I'll send you the notice, so.
Yeah.
Because you bring something.
Okay, yeah.
They're having, I forget what his title is, he's like the assistant director of the Pilgrim Museum at Plymouth. Steve, I believe his name is, and I can't remember the last, but he's very knowledgeable. And it turns out, he talks about a Plimpton resident who carved the tombstones with a certain way of doing it that became, that just spread across.
Really?
The New England, et cetera.
Interesting. Now, is this rain or shine?
I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wear your boots.
I know.
Would you like me to put on cable?
On cable? The, what do you mean? The notes, yeah, sure. You can pick it right off Facebook. But I'll send.
I can just forward the email right to number.
Okay, sure.
Oh, one last thing. Who wants to speak with the chief about possibly bumping up the police presence?
I would think Liz.
You want to talk to him?
You know, the other thing I was thinking when they said that is, we have all these cars parked out here. Why don't we go park one, you know, like where the blinking light is on Prospect, and maybe park one somewhere down on, by Ring Road, Main Street?
I can talk to him about that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Howard would probably let you park one right in his driveway.
Yeah.
Wasn't that a kind of.
It makes me slow down.
Sure.
It does, it does.
Every once in a while, you go and just turn it a little so people don't. So I would make a motion that we end the open session of our selectmen meeting.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yahoo!
Good night!